We excuse Mayor Pike, he is with his family this week. I am Mayor Pro Tem and enjoy this opportunity. Michelle Randall is also on a family item. I don't think, is it a wedding?
Our son's graduating, I think, from Fire Academy down in Las Vegas.
That's right. Fire Academy, well, it's a type of wedding to the real world now. Fighting fires that will obviously test all his skills. Well, we excuse them. Our first item, which technically on the agenda is Item 6A, has been moved to the beginning, and we'll turn some time over to Kim Haven from the county to show us the election, the primary election canvassing.
I think he's going to delegate that, Mayor, so.
Okay. Melanie.
All right. Well, we are here again. It's been another successful election here in St. George. So we do have a little bit of business that we need to take care of today. As you have in front of you, you have packets. I'm very good at making sure that you guys have all the information. But we're going to first start with the first three little sheets up, the single ones that were up on top.
Okay.
Okay, you should have the official, unofficial election night results, and those are all of the absentees that we collected the Friday before the election, all of the early voting, and all of the polling location votes on Election Day. So those are the results that you have included in the unofficial election night results. Now, there are a few more absentees that we do have that came in that are eligible to vote, and if you'll, there is one that says canvas absentee and provisional ballot counts. So there were 356 total absentees that came in after that Friday date. We were able to count 314. Forty-two were late, so we were not able to count those. We also included 76 provisional ballots. You had 77 total throughout all of the precincts here in St. George. We only could not count one.
Pretty good.
So that was actually, you know, very good. The poll workers did a great job, made sure everything was filled out properly. It was really great. So we did add an additional 390 votes to the unofficial election night results. And the third one, our canvas totals, this is just basically kind of a snapshot of what actually happened on the election night. The election night, we ended up with 3,380 total votes for a 9.21 percent turnout. Did have things broken down by early voting and absentee for you. Of course, we added in all of the canvas totals, all of the additional absentees and provisionals, and so I kind of want to focus here on the middle section on the canvas totals. So for early voting, you had 191 people do that for a .52 percent turnout. The polling location on Election Day, there was 1,394 people who came in for a 3.80 percent turnout. And the absentees that we were able to count were 2,109 for a 5.75 percent turnout of that. And the provisional ballots, of course, that was 76 added to a .21 percent turnout. So all in all, you broke the double digits. 10.27 percent turnout. Okay. All right. Now, the candidates, highest to lowest, and at the bottom, of course, Jimmy Hughes had the highest votes at 1,753. Betty Ariel is second with 16.28 percent. Ed Baca with 14.08 percent turnout of, and had 1,398 votes. Greg MacArthur had 1,139 votes for a 11.47 percent turnout. And Craig Hammer had 962 votes for a 9.69 percent turnout. And Brian Thuriet rounds out your six with 780 votes at 7.86 percent turnout. Now, if you've noticed, we did add into where you've got the election night results for each one of those candidates, and then the canvas totals. Now, the ones in the red are the difference between, you know, both the unofficial election night results and then the canvas. Couple of interesting things that I noticed. If you look down, it looks like Lane actually had a little bit better turnout on the provisional ballots by a couple of votes, increased a little bit. But also Kendall Clements also gained a little bit on his election, unofficial election night results. So just kind of a good snapshot for you. Do you have any questions so far? Okay. You do have the unofficial election night results by, it's called a statement of votes cast that will go through each precinct individually. You also have just a basic summary of the official results, just basically a quick snapshot. And then you have, the very last one is the official election night results by precinct.
Wonderful. Melanie, thank you. To some, it looks like just numbers, but it is a valuable thing that we do in a free country with free elections. And of course, as time has evolved, it has included both the absentee, the provisional, and any opportunity someone can take to vote. Sadly, 10 percent is sad. But as was mentioned by Jimmy, a busy time of year, and things start to fall into place for school, et cetera. Nevertheless, we'd like to thank you, Melanie, thank you, Kim. Thank Christina, who put a lot of work together behind the scenes that organized poll workers and polling places. And it was sketchy at times because it was a busy summer, but thank you, Christina, and please thank the poll workers. They'll have one more go around here coming up in November. We'd also like to thank all of the candidates, those that did not make the top six, which carry on into the primary, but which still put their hat in the ring and voiced their opinions and obviously represent hundreds of people that they appeal to in giving their credit for their positions and what they'd like to do. Sad scenario if we ever get to a place where nobody signs up to run. So thank you for that. Melanie, thank you. We'd like to accept the canvas at this point by vote, by a motion and a vote.
Want me to do that? I'll go ahead and make a motion that we accept the 2015 primary election canvas results.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions of Melanie or the results?
Just want to say thank you. It's a huge job.
All in favor say aye of accepting these canvas.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We appreciate that, and look forward to the next go around here in a few months.
Just to double check, so even with the early voting and polling location, absentee was still way outperform, which could be a sign of things to come.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Gary, regular calendar items then?
Right. I think just for maybe the public's information, if they're here for any specific items, there's two items that have been taken off the agenda tonight. The Item 6G is off. We need to put that in different form, we told you before, in an ordinance form, since it has recommended fees, we need to do that by resolution ordinance. The other item is F. At the applicant's request, they've asked to remove that item from the agenda. So those are the only two changes on the agenda, Mayor.
Thank you, Manager. Then bid openings.
All right. First bid opening, Connie will help me with this, but the first, this is the improvements adjacent to the Dixie Center. Since the city owns the property adjacent to the Dixie Center, and we've sold a couple of parcels there, under the terms of the sale, the city was required to make certain that that property, since it's along the Virgin River, has the proper erosion protection controls. And also, as part of the purchase-sell, we agreed to landscape the portion of the frontage in front of the hotels as part of the purchase price. So we had, this has been a long time coming because we can't get into the river until right now, right? Because it has the flight catcher down there, or whatever, the endangered species, whichever one it is at this time of the year. And so we need to get started and go forward on that. So I'll let Connie give you the bids as we receive them.
Okay. We are recommending Progressive Contracting, who is a local vendor and submitted the low bid. Their bid price was $655,944.36.
Progressive Contracting, you heard the amount. Any questions for Connie on that bid? It's quite an extensive project, actually. It's, when you hear a big number like that, it carries a long way along that road.
It's interesting that when you, when this project is complete, from the road, I can't remember the name of that road, it's 7940 or 740, whatever, that, goes around the new road we built, around the Dixie Center and ties into Riverside Drive, everything from there to the river, all the tamaracks will be gone. And then they'll be replanted with species that are, that help us with our flooding issues, combination of willows and other species that are, you know, that conducive to helping us with flooding, so.
Right.
And there'll be some landscaping along the road on both sides. It'll really clean that area up. Sounds like a lot of money, but remember what we sold the property for.
Yeah. And we kind of knew this was part of the deal when we sold this off. And if I remember right, weren't we going to be able to get some of our money back from the EDA or something along those lines?
Yes. All this money will come back from the EDA, from the taxes that'll be paid from the new development. It's just a problem of cash flow that they're not done with their billing yet.
Correct.
So they won't have it taxed until next year, and so we've got to finance it for a year. But we have to have this in so they can open up. I think they're planning to open up by the end of the year, so.
Okay. Ready for a bid?
If there's no other discussion, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we accept the bid, award the bid to Progressive for $655,944.36.
Okay. Any questions on that motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
The next item, as you recall in your budget, you approved for our current fiscal year, we have a need to replace 35 police vehicles that have over 100,000 miles. As you recall, we decided to go to a lease, a four-year lease program this year for the first time, and so these, this is the award of the bid to purchase those 35 vehicles. As I recall, Connie, we went out and we did have a bid from a local company that was within 5 percent, but they did not choose to
Right.
... lower their price down to match the bid we had. It's under state contract, I believe.
Right. Yeah, they declined the 5 percent match, so. We're recommending Larry Miller Ford, who did submit the low bid. The bid of the vehicles, if you purchased them, would be $30,740 each, but we're looking at leasing them right now, so.
Is that structured as a lease purchase or a straight lease?
It's a lease purchase. We can buy at the end of the lease period for a dollar, whatever it is per vehicle, or something like that.
Okay.
So is this total cost, the total amount of our lease payments over the?
Well, this amount is the, is what we're going to, the total cost of the vehicles, by the time you equip them and everything else, is about 38, somewhere between 38 and 40.
Right.
And so the total, I think, lease amount that we'll be leasing is like 1.4 million, if I remember, is the total cost.
Yeah, correct.
So the amount we have here of the $1,075,900 is?
That's just for the vehicles.
And most leases come with some sort of a mileage built into that. How have we structured that to our favor, I hope?
Well, we've discussed this with the police department, and they understand that, and they are very comfortable that they can stay within those miles. If they have to rotate one out to a vehicle that they aren't using, they'll keep a stock of those vehicles so they make sure that we're under, I think it's 80,000 miles or something like that, so. And most, you know, the ones we're replacing are a lot older than four years, and they've just got about 100,000 miles. We've got some that are six and seven years old.
Right. And as their service, Courtney will review the mileage too, to keep track of, you know, the ones that can be still used that are getting close to their max.
We can always rotate those to the school resource officers or the office staff in order to make up the mileage difference if we have to, so.
Yeah, we don't want it to be like the mission field where the missionaries run out of miles and then they're back on foot, right? Until they catch up the next month. Yeah, and I noticed, Gary, that many of the police vehicles, and, you know, we have Deputy Chief with us, why waste the money on putting all the stuff on the outside, right? I've seen many people pulled over and, for some are plain clothes vehicles, so to speak.
Well, that's another discussion, so.
That's called entrapment.
Well, it's important people know that they need to be safe on the road. All right. We've heard the explanation for this formal bid of 35 police officers from Larry Miller. Is there any other questions? Ask for a motion then.
If not, I'll be happy to make the motion to award Larry Miller Ford the award for the lease of 35 SUVs at a cost of $1,075,900.
Second.
Motion and a second. Again, this was in our budget this year. Questions on the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Connie.
Thank you.
We'll wait on the public hearing item. I think it's scheduled for 5:30.
Yes.
So that takes three and four, so we'll go to staff reports. Item 6A is a request for an off-premise beer license for JB's Express Mark. It's a change of ownership. There's already an existing license of this location. The applicant has submitted their qualifications and their application, and they meet the requirements to be issued a license. It's not a new license, change of ownership.
Okay. Any questions on that application?
Motion to approve the off-premise, or off-premise beer license for JB Express Mark.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Next item, you may recall from a previous meeting, was the Hammett Up Against Hunger. It's a 5K event. It's for Food Bank. It was going to be held out in the Fort Pierce Industrial Park, or Business Park. And remember, they were going to cross the River Road twice?
Yeah.
We discussed the route of their 5K and found out that they could go on the same side of the road, so
Stay on the west side.
Stay on the west side, so they wouldn't have to cross the road.
Great.
So we recommend that we allow this event to occur.
Any questions?
I just have a question. On the information we have, we still show the old route. Do we have a new map on that, or do we know what's going to happen?
I've seen the map. I don't have one in front of me, but it's all on the, it's all on the west side. It doesn't go anywhere close to crossing River Road. So I apologize, you don't have one in your packet, but we have reviewed it, and it is, works out as far as not affecting traffic.
Right. Saves some anxiety and some money, too.
Yeah.
Okay. Look for a motion on Item 6B.
I would, I would move that we approve the Hammett Up Against Hunger 5K event as submitted to us.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Again, for those who might be watching, September 12th, from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM, at the Utah Food Bank facility, which is on Fort Pierce Drive out in the industrial park. I can't really tell you what address it is, but you'll see it on the west side of the road as you get out there. Okay. Our next item.
All right, then, let's go to, to report from the Planning Commission meeting that was held on August 11th. How would you know that?
We know. The NSA reports all significant birthdays to us.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Well, a guy that's 49 shouldn't have the shakes there, so.
That's right.
When he puts his, that's why I guess they've done away with the maps on the board, so they don't have to shake when they put the thing up. Is that the problem?
Well, we used to think it was motor nerves, but now we just think you're just plain old nervous.
A lot of nervous energy.
Okay. Item 1A from the Planning Commission report is approval of an 11-lot residential subdivision final plat called the Ledges of St. George Hidden Pinion Phase One. Representative is Development Solutions. Property is located at approximately 1350 West Ledges Parkway in the Ledges Development. Zone is PDR. All aspects of this final plat were reviewed by staff, and it meets the conditions of the preliminary plat. So this is it. This is Ledges Parkway, right here. I believe this is Phase Seven of the Ledges. Anyway, they come off, they get access off of Ledges Parkway. This is their development right here, and then this will be open space area that they'll leave native and dedicate that to the association.
Do you want to take these individually?
I think they have in the past.
All right. Any questions on this final plat? If not, all here, motion?
Oh, go ahead, Jimmy.
Motion to approve the final plat for the Ledges of St. George Hidden Pinion Phase One.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item 1B.
Okay. Item 1B is a request to approve a 10-law, 10-unit residential subdivision final plat called the Ledges of St. George North Gate Peaks Phase One. Again, representative is Development Solutions. This is located approximately 1370 West and north of the Ledges Parkway in the Ledges Development. Zone is PDR. And all aspects of this final plat were reviewed by staff, and it meets the conditions of the preliminary plat. Again, this is right adjacent to Hidden Pinion. Here's Hidden Pinion here, and then here is North Gate here. Again, that's that area that they're going to leave native between the two developments to kind of provide a buffer between the type of units.
Very good. Questions? A motion?
I'd move that we approve the 10-unit residential subdivision final plat for the Ledges of St. George North Gate Peaks Phase One.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay. Item 1C is a request to approve a 16-lot residential subdivision final plat called Hawthorne Estates Phase One. Again, representative is Development Solutions. Property is located approximately 3420 South and 3,000 East. Zone is R110. All aspects of this final plat were reviewed by staff, and it meets the conditions of the preliminary plat. So here's 3,000 East, right here, Cottonwood over here, subdivision we've already approved, and this is their subdivision right there.
Now, I just have a note on this one. This is Hawthorne. Have you, John, I have a note that John was looking at the lot sizes to make sure that they averaged it out correctly.
So the preliminary plat, when the whole preliminary plat was approved, the lot size averaging did, now they're going into phases, so a couple of the phases, lot size averaging won't work out. You know, they, they will not be, they're, on an overall basis, yes, it works.
For Phase One and Phase Two, since they're finals, we'll, we need to make sure that if both of those meet the lot size averaging, we'll be okay.
Okay.
And they, do they both meet?
Okay. John says he's checked it.
Meets that qualification, we'll accept a motion on Item 1C.
I move that we approve the 16-lot residential final plat for Hawthorne Phase One with the minimum approved lot size. These are located at approximately 3420 South and 3,000 East in Little Valley.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay. Item 1D is a request to approve a 14-lot residential subdivision final plat called Hawthorne Estates Phase Two. Representative is Development Solutions. Again, this is located approximately 3420 South and 3,000 East. Zone is R110. All aspects of this final plat were reviewed by staff and it meets the conditions of the preliminary plat. So this is just east of the one you just looked at on Hawthorne Estates Phase One.
Okay. Same quantification for you, Sean, on that one?
Yes, as long as both these phases together meet, the lot size averaging will be okay.
Okay.
I might as well finish Hawthorne Phase Two, so I move that we approve a 14-lot residential final plat for Hawthorne Phase Two with the minimum approved lot size.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion and a second on Hawthorne Phase Two. Questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Okay. Item 2 from the Planning Commission report is a request to approve a 10-lot residential amended subdivision final plat called the Vistas at Entrada Phase One, second, amended and extended. Representative is Horox Engineers. Property is located approximately 2055 West, 2600 North Cougar Rock Circle in the Entrada Development. Zone is PDR. All aspects of this final plat amendment were reviewed by staff, and it meets the conditions of the preliminary plat. The change in this is, originally when this came in, there was a 10-foot gap between the property line and the right-of-way line that they were going to give to the HOA. As the HOA out there looked at it, they decided they did not want to maintain that. They actually wanted that in the lots themselves.
Right.
So basically, the property line here on the north side will come in to the back of curb, which is 10 feet. Property line here on the south side will come in 6 feet to the back of sidewalk, leaving the sidewalk and the private street all within the right-of-way, which the HOA will maintain.
Any questions on that, item number two? Accept a motion there.
Motion to approve the vistas at Entrada Phase One and Two, amended and extended. Does this need legal review still? There's a note on here from Planning Commission, but...
I don't have a note on my notes from Victoria. Is there?
It's probably just from the Planning Commission, where she always asks everything subject to her review.
Yeah, and I think we're fine.
Okay.
As long as we've got the airproof changes that
So motion.
Commission.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Motion. Jimmy, second by Joe. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay. Item 3A from the Planning Commission report is a request to approve a preliminary plat for a 50-unit townhome project with the option for four additional units when a second access is constructed to Dixie Drive. This is called Sunbrook Hollow Town Homes. Location is 415 South Dixie Drive. Property is 6.04 acres. The density is 8.9 dwelling units per acre for all 54. Zone is PDR. General plan is LDR. The applicant is Dennis Gahr. Again, this came before you recently for that zone change application. So they've amended their, what was shown to you originally, eliminating that access right there to the park as an emergency access. They've also shown a second access here for future, so when this second access comes in line here, then they have access to it. And they've divided it into four phases. These units right here will be the fourth and final phase if that access is ever provided. And then the rest is a Phase One here, two here, three here, with this recreation amenity area being part of Phase Two.
Just to clarify, the, the unit that will have the four is just by that other access?
It's right there.
Okay.
Originally, it was right here. They moved it here so that they could now create that access there to that north side of the existing building.
Thank you.
And Wes, even though it's a small map in our packet, and it's much bigger, obviously, on the screen there, it looks like the right-of-way for the road that we talked about last time is actually a bit wider than the actual drawn-on curb and gutter.
So the easement access is a 50-foot access easement. As I recall, when we met with the developer, we were going to require roughly 34 feet as far as his road. Yeah, I think it was 28 of asphalt, 32 with the sidewalk on one side, and four feet for curb, yeah, 36. And so it allows him to move that in that easement area, hopefully to miss the tree. And so it allows him to move that in that easement area, hopefully to miss the trees
Right.
here on the south side, and maybe giving him some room to plant some trees here on that north side, kind of a buffer between the road and the existing building.
Well, I went back and looked at the site again, following our last discussion. If I were those neighbors that were to the south that are already in those existing homes there, you know, it would really be nice to keep as much of that foliage as possible.
And that's what we're going to look for in the construction drawings, is to try to keep those, and if they have to come down, we're going to look, ask them to replant new trees to provide that buffer.
We had considerable discussion about this, did we meet all of the concerns of those that were here? It sounds like we did, but...
I'm not sure we met all their concerns, but they were addressed
Addressed.
to the best that we could. There is a challenge there on that Dixie Drive getting in and out, but I think the city's probably going to have to do something with the median that's there. Is that true Gary?
Yeah, we've looked at that, the, there was two issues that the property owners had, it wasn't with the development, it was with their access from their subdivision onto Dixie Drive, and they, the one property owner within their own subdivision has a problem with some trees. He's cut those down, so when you're on that site and they're not cutting them down, he's trimmed them all back, and so the site distance is good. What they're really asking for is to narrow the median up to allow a suicide lane, basically is what we call it, I guess it's a, you pull out into that turn lane and wait your turn to get, for traffic to come, I'm sure it's kind of a little holdings on there, which I'm not sure that's any safer than waiting your turn out of the thing, but we're looking at that from a traffic standpoint. But that was a request, really I don't think had any effect on this, other than that you're going to have more people trying to make that left turn, and tellers alike there. Eventually, when the property to the south, in the plantations, the lakes area, when they develop and there's an increase there and that connection's made from them through the Highland subdivision, you'll probably see a traffic signal at that location.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So yes Betty, many of the concerns were addressed, and I think Wes has talked about a few of those, including that emergency access to the park and things like that.
I think also the neighbors were, at the planning commission were very, more vocal and more concerned until they found out that the existing zone change that was there before had about three times the density or more of what the density of this project is, and so once I think they had their neighborhood meetings and everything else, they were in favor, in fact, the ones that spoke at the meeting, you remember the last one? Were actually in favor, there wasn't any opposition to it from that standpoint, because this is certainly a down zoning, basically, of density than what was already approved in the location, so I think it is just that speed of the traffic really on Dixie Drive, and it is very higher than what the speed limit is, I can tell you that, because I live on that road as well.
Okay.
Are you ready?
Yep.
Okay, move approval of a preliminary plat for fourteen buildings with fifty-four townhome units in a development called Sunbrook Hollow Town Homes. And this is located at four fifteen south Dixie Drive.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, any other questions?
I think the only other thing was we have to, we're approving phase one with the option of phase two at this point.
Well, there's four phases, so the first three will contain the fifty units, and then phase four will contain the last four.
Yes. Thank you.
Good clarification, thank you. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, okay.
Okay, item three B from the planning commission report is a request to approve a preliminary plat for a ninety-five lot residential subdivision called South Rim at Foremaster Ridge. Location is Foremaster Drive and seventeen forty east, the property is thirty-seven point seven-nine acres, the density is two point five dwelling units per acre. Zone is R one ten, general plan shows this is L D R, the representative here tonight is Alpha Engineering. Couple items on this, let's see, they will have to bring out sewer and drainage right here, their wastewater line right here, between these two lots, so we'll have to work out some type of easement or dedication to the city to get those utilities through there as the grade of the road is this way down to here. So they'll need an easement through there. They are requesting lot size averaging for three lots that they have that fall below the R one ten size. There also is a thirty-foot ridge line setback that runs along here, as there is a ridge line along here, and so there's a thirty-foot setback. Let me just see what I had. It's not on the city-approved map, and that's why it's only a thirty-foot setback on that ridge line. The ordinance does require council to approve allowing them to put that, so they would, their request is to put that thirty-foot setback in those lots. And obviously, based on the ordinance, no structures or accessory structures, as the ordinance says, would be allowed within that thirty-foot setback. But it does require council to approve them, and their request is to put that setback in their lots. Let's see, these lots obviously along here with the grade across them will not, will be walkout basements, and they'll have to deal with their drainage somehow and get it out to the streets. Let's see, these lots here will require access on the interior street, not onto Foremaster. These lots are double frontage lots, which require the landscape strip and the privacy wall. The concern staff is having, and we're trying to look into it, is the rest of Foremaster, the privacy wall is constructed right at the back of a walk, and so it looks a little, you know, the applicant, well, the concern is, is suddenly now you'll have right at the back of a walk, and then it'll bump out for just a little ways, and you'll have this landscape strip, and so we're looking to see if there's a way, you know, maybe to eliminate that landscape strip and be consistent all the way along there with the wall at the back of a walk. And then the other thing we're looking at, there's a fair amount of traffic on Foremaster, there's about thirteen thousand seven hundred vehicles once the, a day, once Mall Drive Bridge opened. You know, and the concern is, you like compare that, the original, like more business building than one before, I think there's about eleven-five on that, and that's a four-lane road, this is a two-lane road, and so we're looking with the applicant to see if the possibility... There's a stub road about right here that comes off, and sewer comes down that way down to Riverside, and we're looking with the applicant to see the possibility of providing a narrow road down here to Riverside that would then allow these lots, instead of having to turn left, which appears to be the majority of the movement that would come out of these, to be able to get access from here down to Riverside with the amount of traffic, thus avoiding Foremaster with that amount of traffic. So we're working with the applicant to see if that's a possibility.
Is that off the east side?
South.
It's off the south, there's a cut right now where they take their utilities from this development here, and they take them right down into Riverside. And so we're looking to see, you know, it's steep, but I think you can make it work, but that's what we're looking at, to see if we can give them a second access, so that people that live in here don't just have to use Foremaster, but can maybe have a second access.
Don't we have an ordinance, I mean, a policy that certain number of units require a second access?
Right.
So I mean, there's going to, we're going to have to deal with this particular issue, because Foremaster is a lot higher volume than what it currently is built for, and so and any more development, there's going to have to have, I think, a second access of some sort, and so I know the developer's not going to like hearing that, but we still need to address that. This is a preliminary plat, so that'll have to be addressed before we get to the final plat, unless you want to give a waiver or something, but I think with all the traffic on Foremaster and tell that lesson somehow, I don't know how, but we're going to have to get another access off that hill right there.
So that access you're talking about, that's not the same property owners', is it?
I think, and I have to go back and check it, I thought I checked it, I think the property is actually the city property right there on that south side. I don't think it's Foremaster's, Foremaster owns this area over in here, but as I recall, the city owns that, and I'll have to check that again. Plus, there's a...
I think we were supposed to be deeded that as part of the development, because it is a side hill, I'm not sure the status of it, because that was a different property owner than the Foremasters when that was developed, but...
I'll have to look at that.
Hillside visited a private piece that sits right across from the other development that's down there on that knoll, what is that, river's edge or something? There is one private piece in there that I think has the easement on one side or the other that you're talking about, so...
Well, there has to be an easement for the sewer and water, it's just a question of whether the easement granted a road
Right.
on top of the easement, so. But we got work to do on that particular subdivision, and before it comes back on the final plat, we've also alerted the developer, property owner to that fact, and so they're looking at those issues. It will increase obviously the cost of the project to build the road, and so, you know...
Any other comments?
Got just one more, oh, sorry.
I'm just wondering, is there not another access? Down, which direction is that?
This...
I say down, but...
South?
Yeah, is there not, well, where Howard Lane is, Howard...
So Howard Lane comes right through here, and then it comes up and then ties back into Foremaster, so no, everything comes from Foremaster. That was the concern, if there was another access to another road, you know...
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a very important point, Gary.
If you remember right, we went through the same issue down at Stone Cliff with
Right.
the new development to the east of the Stone Cliff, because we only had one access, and then we had a lot of houses, so from a fire safety standpoint, plus the traffic, it's already on a two-lane road on Foremaster with the ups and downs, I don't think you can dump all that traffic onto Foremaster, so we're going to have to deal with that issue, I mean, and so we're alerting the developer to that right now, and we'll have to see how it can work with the hillside, and it's a tough, tough sight to get off that hill, obviously, because you're up on top, and so we'll address it before it comes back on a final plat.
Most of the time, on seven hundred, I will, I will go ahead and turn right and go down to Riverside and come around the hill, and generally, if I hit the light just right, I'll beat the cars that were going over Foremaster. If you get a lot of traffic, because it's kind of uphill, and it just goes as a crawl, and then you get down there to the light, so I try it both ways, because I drive that road a lot, and it's getting to the point where it's just as easy to go down to Riverside and go around.
It looks like that parcel, our city parcel's a little bit to the west of that, and so...
Well, I think that that property that's from that top down can't be developed, and I, so I'm sure that there's, there's a way to work through that enough, I think I know who the owner is, and I think that was, we need to follow up with them, because I think that should have come to us.
And then one other note, just so that the applicant understands, we're probably going to have to clarify the notes on the plat a little better, we're finding that some of the ridge, some of the no disturb areas that have been included in lots before by the council have been disturbed, a lot of times what we find is, a person buys a lot, and they think they have a larger lot, but when they get to the building envelope, they see that it's a lot smaller than the plan that they thought they could put on that lot, and so we're getting some people that are, some lot owners that are upset, but if they, if they had seen the plat and read all the notes on the plat, so we're trying to figure out a way to, if those no disturb areas are included in the lot to better notify the lot owners that that building envelope is going to be a lot smaller than their lot appears to have.
Which enters the concern, especially on the south side, because often if they believe they own that property and they think it's no disturb, but they end up pushing material off onto it also. And we've been accused of not caring what someone else's view looks like, but those that would live across the river looking north would see a lot of that just poured over like it was a mining operation, which we've seen a little of that come off Foremaster, not very much. But it would be a special note in there, I think Sean has touched on that already by saying, you know, there's some special conditions on that parcel of no disturb.
Wouldn't we want to maybe put the buildable pad onto the lot?
Yes.
Because that's what we did down at Toniclin, because we had the same concern, and we actually made them put the buildable area on the plat itself, so it's approved, and so they know when they buy it, and then we know when we see it from the building department that the corners are on just the buildable, they can't get outside that building envelope in order to protect that, so.
And it makes...
We didn't have that on the other side.
That makes much more sense, because when you buy the lot, you just get a layout of the lot, you don't get the entire plat, most people don't have it, so that makes more sense to do.
And it's full disclosure to the purchaser? Okay. All right.
So can that be part of a motion?
Yeah. Well, I wouldn't worry about it, I wouldn't worry about it now, because you're going to get it when you come back on the final plat, all we're doing is really showing you the building concept of what it is, and it, you know, obviously, I think it looks just similar to what we've already there, it's just those other questions about the... You'll have to come back and be approved in your final plat before it can be allowed to go forward.
Thank you, so the staff will have to
Yes.
consider that building?
Right, we'll have them put that envelope on the final plat, so you can see the building envelope on those.
And then, and then discussion on the need for a secondary access?
Right, like I said, we've talked to the applicant, they've said, yeah, there's probably a need, so it's just a matter of working it through with them and seeing how we can get this built.
Even though this doesn't come to Hillside, correct?
No. The road probably would.
The road would, yes. But you still, because we consult on both hillside issues that are triggered by certain, you know, percentage of hillside, et cetera, but we also consult on the geology of the area, you require that as well, right? Because that's very similar to the south end of the old airport, it's a very similar formation.
There are some other, that's what I've been told, I don't know.
So you would see that on the last USGS Utah soils condition report?
Yeah, the UGS, uh-huh.
And that would of course be part of the required engineering?
Right.
Okay.
Considering all of these really weighty matters, and this is a preliminary plat, I would like to move approval of the ninety-five lot residential subdivision for the south rim at Foremaster Ridge, which includes a thirty-five foot setback, and...
Thirty.
Thirty.
Oh, thirty, okay.
From the ridge line, yeah.
Thirty, and I think that's all it's requiring.
Maybe just a note for the second access to be addressed, so that there is no question in the minutes that we're addressing that as part of the final plat, has to be resolved or discussed with you about the second access if they don't include it.
Okay. Requiring a second access to the subdivision.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other questions or additions to the motion? Including Sean's comments about marking on the plat a better description of the building envelope? Okay.
Yeah.
Do you accept that in the motion?
Yes, sure, I don't know that it needs to be.
Yes.
Okay, all right, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, item three C is a request to approve a preliminary plat for a thirty-five lot residential subdivision called the Cove at Little Valley. Property is located at the southwest corner of the intersection of Horseman Park Drive and Little Valley Road. Number of lots is thirty-five, the density in the R one twelve, which is this area here, is two point six dwelling units per acre, and then the RE twenty along Little Valley Road is one point nine eight dwelling units per acre. Zone is R one twelve and RE twenty, general plan shows this is Low Dancy Residential, the applicant is Sullivan Field LLC, representative is Paul Blackmore from Blackrock Engineering. So they will have double frontage lots right here along Little Valley Road, which will require the privacy wall and the ten-foot landscape strip. As with other developments on Little Valley Road, they are requesting that the city maintain that and own that, and they would pay, as the other developments have done, that landscape maintenance fee for a ten-year period. That's one of their requests. They, also the cross-section here on Horseman, I know you can't really see it right here, there is a trail that runs along here. This is a sixty-six foot road, but as we've looked at the future traffic volumes, as development builds out, this road actually does, you know, it's right on the border between a sixty and a sixty-six, they've requested it be built as a sixty, thus allowing the trail to stay within the right-of-way. Staff felt like that was okay, and so it'll narrow down the asphalt width, will, from this section over here, and then they'll do an, instead of a ten-foot, they'll do an eight-foot trail along this portion here, which is part of the master plan trail. Then the other one is, there is a low spot right here in Little Valley Road, in that recent storm in July, there was a fair amount of water that overtopped that curb right there, as this is the low spot, and then it rises up here. And a fair amount of this filled was, I'm not sure, all over into here, but I think it went into... field was, I'm not sure, all over into here, but I think it went into here was flooded. The, as I've met with the engineer and talked with him and so forth, his, he sees that probably he'll need some type of drainage corridor somewhere along one of these lot lines. So basically, there's an inlet right here that collects the water, because it is the low spot, and right now dumps it into a ditch. Somehow that pipe will then have to be extended through the development along a lot line, and, and when we do that, we'll, he'll make a corridor there for drainage in a stormy event larger than that can handle, so that can pass through there, since this is the low spot, and get into the roads and then work its way down as it has in the past. That's so, when you see the final plat, there will be some, something, that'll be shown at that time after he does his analysis, and they look at the drainage and so forth. There's also a power line here, a power pole right here, in talking with Dixie REA or Dixie Power, they don't have real good access to that power pole. They're asking also for access along one of these lot lines, and so as I spoke with the engineer, he's trying to draw something up where the access to that power pole also serves as that overflow corridor. So you'll see that on the final plat, where that access will be, they just haven't got to that point yet.
That, and that will be in the RE20 lots?
It will be on one of these bigger lots right through here, because here's where the drain sits, that's the low spot it comes, so it'll probably be along one of these right in here. He'll determine that after he's done his drainage study and, and looked at the flows and so forth coming through there.
And then recommend to them, they always go a little bit bigger than what their study says. Our problem isn't here that we have too much rain, we just have too much all at once.
Right, right.
And we always, we all, it'll handle, it'll handle, but we're having a few issues down there, I know it's because a lot of the area isn't developed, and so we get little pockets where the drainage is good and they're not, I've had some neighbors approaching me saying, hey, there's just not enough drainage here.
This is one of the tougher areas, because it, you know, these older homes here, that, I think it's Little Valley Ranches or whatever, they've been there a long time, and they are in a low area, and this ends up being an area that, yeah, gets a fair amount of drainage through there.
Every lot in St. George floods, I think it's just something you've gotta recor, I mean, I'm in a high area, and we flood, we flood everybody below us, the water just comes down.
Right. Well, I, I think that we've, we've been aware of some of the, the letters and emails that you've received, we've met with the developer out there, and we've been looking at all of them, but unless you change the overall policies of the city as far as what we require developers to put in, right now, we require up to a 10-year storm, and then the 10-year storm has to be taken off in the pipes, but then anything over a 10-year storm has to be maintained in the roads, and if you get more than a 100-year storm all at one time in one particular location, then the water's gonna come out of the curb, and it's gonna go on to the fronts and the yards, of the front yards, and so hopefully as they build, the developers build, they build the houses up a little bit, because that is gonna be, you know, and the question of the storm you're talking about, there's a difference in opinion on how much water was received at that time, but it's, it's looking like it was somewhere close to a 100-year storm, that, based on what the, the airport showed, but maybe not what we showed down, but, but we're asking the engineer building all these homes to make sure that we, and we're reviewing those documents, we need to get another pipe in, in that goes on down to Horseman's Park at some point in time as well, and we're working on that, so. We understand there's, there's some, as, if development occur all at once, then you could require it all to be done from here to there, but as they are spotty, there's, the gaps in between makes it difficult, so, but we understand, we've gotta be looking at that right now.
Okay, any other questions about this area?
Yeah, I have a question on the far north piece there, it looks like it has a separate tax ID on the corner of Horseman Park.
This one right here?
Yeah.
It is, it's the Sullivan, Sullivan piece, and so that lot will be left out, it won't be part of the subdivision, although they are looking at, they've been in, trying to talk with them about purchasing it, they haven't been able to do so yet, but the frontage in the agreement with, and I'm not sure who did this agreement, but the agreement with this property owner at that time indicated that the curb and gutter with this development would be built all the way around that lot, so you'll actually see that lot become fully improved, and the access will most likely come from right there, although they would like the possibility of access there if they need it.
Okay.
I think the Sullivan family was the original owner. It's not the same Sullivan family that's developing, but it was the Al Sullivan family, and so I think they had both parcels, that's why that was kept out, and that agreement was structured that way.
Okay, two questions, Wes, one, is this abut the Little Valley master plan area on the south side?
On this, right through here?
Where the power pole is and the drainage is, yes, because there are still some.
There is no.
Properties there.
Just the, these lots right here, so there is really no buffer that's shown on the master plan anymore.
And therefore not required right there?
Right, right.
Okay. Those people will still have a right to keep everything there that they have, though, and those neighbors. How are we informing neighbors that they will know that?
We've been putting it on the plat, it is an agricultural area, and they need to be aware of that, and they, there are nuisances associated with that.
And Gary and some will remember that originally this piece of property, wasn't it 114 units or something?
It was significantly different than this, it was almost like, I think they were less than five, five or six thousand square feet per unit.
Yeah, they were patio homes or something, and.
New urbanist, new urbanist design of some sort.
Yeah.
So this is certainly, I think, a better project as far as how it works, fits into the neighborhood.
Amen.
The new urbanists moved to the country. All right, any other questions on this item? Can we have a motion?
I would move we approve the preliminary plat for 35 lot residential subdivision known as the Cove at Little Valley, subject to the easement that's gonna be needed for the drainage and the power line.
Second.
Motion and a second, any questions on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, Wes?
Okay, item 3D from the Planning Commission Report is a request to approve a preliminary plat, it's actually for a three-lot res, commercial subdivision called Boulder Creek Crossing, located at 1450 South River Road, property is 9.37 acres, zone is PD Commercial, general plan shows it as commercial, the applicant is Rosenberg Associates. So they've got three lots here, this lot, one will be that car wash that recently came through for that zone amendment, zone change, then they'd have lot two, and then lot three with this road that they would dedicate through here, a 66-foot road for commercial access. They do have a 25, they have a 20-foot easement right now, the city, the city's requesting them to increase that to five additional feet for that, I think it's a 27-inch sewer main that runs right through there, one of the bigger mains the city has, so they're proposing to do a three-lot. They also will be doing a D-cell lane here and here. As they go forward, the plan is, this will be separately owned, but these will just be, and they show them, just kinda giving you a representation of possible locations of future pads, if you look on your, drawing in your packet, and the pads will be individually owned is what they're projecting right now, with the rest of the area being common area to the association. So right now, all they're gonna, going to build right now is this darker hatch line as an access through the site, so they can also put in utilities for the site.
And it appears that lot two wraps completely around lot one?
It does.
Okay. Any questions of Wes? Can we accept a motion?
Just to clarify the, point out to me again where the car wash is going.
Right here on lot one.
Okay.
Two.
For some reason, they don't wanna be part of it, they just wanna own their own individual lot and, and have it their own.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, well, any other questions? Can we have a motion then on this item?
Sorry, one more clarification, so they'll, they'll come back in for each one of those individual.
They will, so is each building, and that was one of the concerns with Planning Commission, and that's why we faded back the buildings, because before, when they went to Planning Commission, they were darkened, and they were uncomfortable with that location of that building especially, felt like that hadn't given, been, given enough review, and, and so they asked them to fade these back to show them as possible, but they will come back to you for approval.
Okay.
Motion to approve the preliminary plat Boulder Creek Crossing.
Second.
Motion and a second, any questions on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Ray?
Mayor, if you would ask if anybody's here for the public hearing?
Oh, yes, we're at that point, exceeded that.
And we could.
Is there anyone here for item number 3A?
And we could go ahead and take care of the other items then.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ray.
Thank you for commenting on it.
This next and last item on the Planning Commission Report is a conditional use permit, and it's, it's really for garage height. Consider request to construct in addition to an existing garage which will exceed the allowable height of 15 feet unless a conditional use permit is approved by the council. The requested height is about 18 feet 6 inches, and that's to the midpoint of the roof. The property APN is here, and it's located at about, well, at 2480 East, 3670 South, and that's just westerly of Little Valley Road, zoning there is A1 agricultural. So on the screen, this just shows the approximate area for reference, is Little Valley Road, here's 3670 South. There's a lot more information here than probably is necessary, it's just the plans came in, and it showed remodeling the house, and it showed doing a little pool house, I'm just trying to say that the real focus here is the garage, the remodel and additional will be done by building permit, and staff's already looked at and approved the little small pool house with a covered patio. This shows the property, existing home, existing pool, existing garage in the back, and the conditional use permit is gonna focus on this garage in the back. Close-up view of that, shows the zoning, and the garage addition in the back, this is kinda flipped here, north is going down to the bottom, you'll see, but if you're on a street looking in at the property, you would see the existing garage in the back, and this is the addition. I'm a little bit jealous, he said, in the first garage, he's gonna put a Model A, he's gonna put a classic Chevelle here, and an RV here, and a classic Chevelle here, but I guess that's neither here nor there. And it meets and exceeds the requirements for distance from the house, and it's about 78 feet back from the little pool house. Picture of what the home looks like now, below it is just kinda FYI, how they're gonna remodel it, and the existing garage in the back, which will be added to. And I'll quickly go through, and this is the garage addition, some elevations, some floor plans, and this is just information showing how the height of the roof was calculated and why it needed a CUP. And I will rush through the rest, and that concludes comments. Again, it's a request, staff and Planning Commission felt it was fairly routine, it's large acreage out there, not unusual for the other types of properties that are out there.
Was, was that existing garage a CUP?
That's a good question. I, I'm not aware of that, I don't know how old it is.
Okay.
This, this new, I'm sorry, this new height is going to be much higher.
Okay.
16 to 18, it looked like, I like to look at these, just to see if there's any views or anything, but I haven't looked on the, on the ground, because I, I think I was in jeopardy of trespassing one time. No, I don't wanna do that.
There's a few views here out in the area, here's the home, the garage way in the distance back here is existing, and you can kinda see it's not unusual for the area.
Everything's beautiful out there, everybody has a view. I'll go ahead and make a motion unless there's other questions, to approve the conditional use permit to exceed the 15-foot height for the detached garage up to 18 feet.
Second.
Motion and a second, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I think the reason these started coming to us was that early on, we started them, seeing them with a lot of plumbing and private entrances and elevators and satellite dishes, so to avoid some of the issues we have with other uses in a residential area, that's why they started coming to us, in addition to the height issue.
The height, and then it's a single story, and.
Okay, thank you, there was some other business there we can read about in the Planning Commission, we appreciate your efforts and work there. Gary?
I'd like to take a little personal privilege, if I could.
Okay.
And introduce the newest city employee to you.
Wonderful, please do.
Well, we'd have Sharon Holkinson come up, maybe, and you can meet the new human resource director for the city of St. George.
Very nice.
Is this where she gives her speech to?
She doesn't, I told her she couldn't talk. And she actually didn't know she was gonna be introduced, she wouldn't have come.
Exactly, I wouldn't be here if I would've known that I had to come up here, but it's nice to meet you anyway.
She's been here on the job a week or so, I think, now, two weeks?
This is my second week, almost two weeks.
Well, give us a little bio.
All right, so I'm, I'm originally from northern Utah, I lived there all my life until a few years ago. Ogden area, Northern Davis County, I went to Roy High School, so, yeah, and then I finished my master's degree just a few years ago and moved to northern Arizona, and I've been there for almost three years, working for a community college there as their human resources director, before coming here, so I'm excited to be here and, to be in St. George and to be your new human resources director.
Well, we appreciate that, and we, we all love Judith, but she had her first day in, first week too, so.
Yeah.
You'll, you'll certainly fit right in, and you, you come recommended, and certainly.
Thank you.
You're hired for the qualities that you bring, so welcome.
Well, thank you, and as I said, I'm excited to be here, and Judith's shoes are some big shoes to fill, so she's a, she's a good mentor, she's still here until the end of next week, I believe, and so, yeah, she's, she's helping a lot, and I appreciate it, so, nice to meet all of you.
Welcome.
Thank you, Sharon.
Having a great HR department, as Gary will say, is what keeps good employees, too.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe go back and, and follow the agenda now, and go to the public hearings, if that would be, I don't think this'll be a big issue, this is a public hearing to consider vacating a portion of the public right-of-way and road on Canyon View Drive. If you remember right, we just approved a bid to realign this road, and Canyon View Drive now will come into an intersection, and with the new alignment, there's some existing portion of that roadway that will, is no longer necessary as part of that right-of-way, so we'd like to vacate the portion of that right-of-way that's outside of the new roadway. I don't think we're gonna do anything with it, and other one hold it to ourselves at this point in time.
Actually, in the agreement that we have with Leland Byrd, in exchange for us giving, getting the right-of-way for, for Canyon View, they get this little stub.
Okay, but how about across the other side?
Well, we're only abandoning the stub on that one side.
Because there's another, as you come over, there's a property on the other side, there'll be some extra acreage there, we'll wanna look and see how we do it.
That's where the city manager will be doing some.
I live right around the corner from this, so I'll have to be involved in that, I guess, so, okay. Leland Byrd is the actual owner, and is a, they had a five, approximately a five-acre parcel, so when Sean negotiated the right-of-way from the owner, Mr. Byrd, he dedicated the new right-of-way for the road, and then asked for any extra right-of-way to be abandoned to come to him as the adjacent property owner, so, he's the only one that could use it, because he fronts it on all sides.
So that'll just revert when we abandon it, it'll revert back to, yeah.
So, any.
Public hearing.
Any questions? We'll open the public hearing then, for anyone who's here to address this item 3A. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, go back to your action, counsel.
Motion to vacate the portion of the public roadway where we had the road stub on Canyon View Drive.
Second.
Motion and a double second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll go back to the regular agenda, so we'll go to item 6E, which is, and I'm gonna distribute a map around to you, I'm sorry I don't have it on the board. This is basically a formality with. This is basically a formality with regard to state law. State law requires you to take public comments on properties that the city might want to sell that are significant, more than five hundred thousand dollars, or whatever that portion might be. So, as you recall, as part of the new airport, then we acquired this property, and as part of that abandonment of the airport. And so now, in front of you, you can see the map. It shows you the outline of the old airport up on top, as well as a piece of property the city purchased a number of years ago from the Flowers family. It's already been disturbed, just to the north of the airport property, and to a little bit to the west, next to the entrance to the quarry trail, right in that particular area. So, what we'd be asking tonight, we'd ask for if there's any public comment, or anybody that's come to address the issue of the city being able to dispose of this property, you know, like we do when we own other properties in the city. So, that's the action that you'd need to take tonight, if you're so inclined.
Is this the Flowers property right there?
Yeah, the little portion on top. I apologize, I wish I had a map I could show you.
We had, we actually had one on...
Oh, you have it on?
And Wes was supposed to put that up, or John. Yeah, let me...
Well, why don't we go on to the next item, then?
And I can get that up for you.
And then we'll get that up, so you can see it on the screen, so...
Okay, Gary, good.
And we'll go to, to, boy, this will be a boring long one. I don't know if we want to go there or not. Take a break for a minute, or...
Okay, we'll take a ten-minute break to gear up for six H.
How about a five-minute break? We'll have him here by then.
Six and a half-minute break, then.
We have the treasurer and the finance, or the administrative services director here, and so we know what we're talking about there, on technical stuff.
All right, we'll reconvene in about five minutes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We are ready. Okay, Gary, it appears that we could go back to the first item about the Ridge Top Complex. Okay.
Maybe just to reintroduce this, the, under Utah state law, if the city owns a piece of property or a, that's valued above a certain amount, which might be a significant value up to five hundred, you know, if it's less than five hundred thousand, I guess they don't, a value dollar, they don't consider that significant. And so, there's other ways to have public comment, rather than having it in a public meeting. So, since this property was, now is in city ownership after the airport was moved to where it's current location, so now we're trying to figure out what we want to do with the property, obviously, and we've had numerous discussions with the council about it. But, so technically, we're talking about the ridge. Who was that? Oh, maybe I double-dipped it there. Okay, anyway, that's the topic, that's basically follows the... Who's playing with me? This? All right. See how steady I am? That, all that property there was part of the airport, the old airport. The city actually owns more prop...
Okay, Gary. We put it up to you.
There's a bunch of property the city owns off the ridge right here, which we are not intending to sell at this point, you know, or we don't really want to ever sell it. At least, that's the current staff's opinion, because it's just hillside, and not, we don't think it's that developable. We'll be coming back to the mayor and council here in the next month or so, with a plan for all the uses on top of this hill. As we discussed before, the intent is to create a corporate business park up there, high-tech, educational, to really make that a...
Research.
Research park, and all that. And since we own the property, we don't need to sell it. We can wait until, and we've had several different companies already asking us what we want to do with the property, and we're saying we're not selling it until we have the uses determined, and those uses will coincide with the corporate business park. And we already have an agreement to sell thirty acres of property somewhere right in this vicinity to the DXATC Vocational College. And they now are working on their financing to get the forty million dollars from the state to build their campus there, which will be the first building within this project site. And we'll deal with the other requests that we have from other businesses that like to locate in that, in that area. This little parcel right here was purchased by the city from the Flowers family. When you go up, there's a road that comes right along here, that, then there's these condos, the stuff that's developed, and there are all condos right along, in front of that block. We purchased that property several years ago, the city did, to protect the cut that's up there, so that we wouldn't get any more additional cutting on the face of the hill, so we could preserve the hillside. So, we own that, that area in that hill has been, already been disturbed. If you go up there and you look, it's been...
Right.
Taken all the vegetation off of it, so it's actually zoned, are three right now, so you could build apartments on that particular location, townhouses. It's already zoned for that. So, the action we're taking tonight would be taking public comment from anybody that would like to make comment whether we should sell that property or not in the future. So, that's the reason for the meeting.
Excellent. Okay, so it's not quite a public hearing, but we sure would entertain any comments relative to what Gary has just outlined, and you see on the map up there. Please come forward to the mic, state your name for the record. We know you, but, for the record.
I'm Rick Hefler, I just had a question regarding the, you already have a city park up there. Can you show where that is, and is that part of what's being sold, or protected, or, because I can't tell on the drawing?
No, the, the park is right there, and then there's a vacant piece of property, the fence is roughly right there, and then there's a vacant piece outside the fence, and then that's the park. Now, you know, it's anticipated, as you'll see the plan that comes... Okay?
One of the Derrick Sons has a scout project.
Eagle project.
Yeah, we see that area as remaining, as a park for all the developing up on, the homes that are already on the black hill up there.
It's a nice little...
And we can add on to it, simply for the reason that it's got, yeah, there you go.
You see people there all the time?
Yeah, that's the, that's the park area that's existing, and then this is the adjacent park, too. It's a little bit higher there, there's a little hill right there, and it goes down to that property. The area we're talking about now would be that line right there, would be the northern part of that. That's the Flowers piece that we've, that we purchased, and we talked about, as you see on that northern end. This is the parking lot that we developed for the trail, the quarry trail.
Temple Quarry, yep.
And I think that the concept, when we get it to the council, you'll see, is that, why don't you go back to the other one, then, Mark? Well, you can do it on that, I guess. But the, the idea is that there's an existing road that kind of comes around here, and that's right next to the edge of the hill. And so, our plans are that that would become public space, and there'd be a park, or there'd be an open space there. Anywhere off the side of that road, down there, down the bottom, and in, on this side, where it's outside the roadway, that would be dedicated public park. The idea will be, when you see it, and it comes back, is that we will, we're proposing that we build the roads, and then we use the existing runway, right down the middle, as a road to service all the properties off of that. And you'll also see, when it comes back, that there'll be a fifty-foot buffer from the edge of the cliffside that will not allow any building within that buffer.
But it could be a park.
Oh, yeah, it'd be a park. It'd just be no buildings in that. So, you're, so you're looking at the site from below, you wouldn't see the buildings, okay, they'd be set back. And Mike could go in the hundred-foot area if they're single-story, but if they're any multiple-story, they'd have to be set back into the middle. You know, and we envision that this would be a, kind of the main boulevard for the development, and it's, I mean, it's already existing with enough, you know, roadbed capacity. Instead of tearing it up, let's use it as a road, and then develop the parcels off of that, and make that a, you know, the feature point of the hill with regard to open space. People could come up and go on and use it as a drive. So, anyway, you'll, that's pretty mature, but you'll see all the drawings. We're working on it right now. We should have it done in the next two months to bring it back, because we've got to rezone this. We don't have to rezone for the DXATC parcel, because it's a government, you know, state building, and so we can probably go forward with that. But we want to come back, make out a PD zone, and then you have to see all the uses that come in under that, to meet the criteria of the uses that we've wanted to prove for that site, high-tech, business park. So, anyway, that's what we're looking at.
And quite frankly, those that would be interested in that concept, and see the uses that are allowed, are actually attracted to that list, because they don't want to be somewhere where then they are lumped with, you know, other uses that don't appear that they're serious. So, it's a great concept.
Well, I think that, you know, we're also contemplating that there'll be a trail built all the way around the top, so that, and then there'll be a road that comes off, I can't see... I can't see it close enough.
250 West down in there.
Off 250 West, that road will be built up so we don't violate the hillside ordinance, and it will come up off of, well, somewhere right there. Got to figure this out. You'll have to explain to me in layman terms there and what I'm doing wrong here, so. So anyway, there's a road that comes up, and it serves, go keep going down if you would, Mark, so you can see the end of the.
It follows a natural bench, kind of like what Foremaster does.
Yeah, see this right here, it's anticipated that that could possibly be a park, there's other space along the edge, it might be too narrow, it could be open space so that people could drive up and sit and look out, a view, kind of a view park, or we could make that a developable pad, but the road comes somewhere right, right down here, I believe, and it comes up and would attach to that, and so that'd be your second access.
Very good. That should help, Rick. Yep, okay. Anyone else like to comment? I imagine someday the room will be filled with some of the opportunities that are going to happen up there, so. Very good.
Okay, that's all we need, we don't need any action on that particular item, so we'll go ahead and to the, turn this over to the administrative services department for their presentation. You had a little bit of a taste for this in the work meeting, the last work meeting we had regarding the Paymentis system, so.
Mayor Proton and council, we're excited to bring this forward to you. It's, right now we do take credit cards for utility payments, it's regarding utility payments only. So if it's a non-utility, then that's going to be handled at a later date through an RFP, but we're pretty excited, because this new company, Paymentis, we provide you with the information, we feel that they are a sole-source company, there's no other company that can bundle all this together into one package, and that also already is compatible with our current software, compatible with a lot of things that we already do. But Paymentis would take the place of a couple of other companies that we're using to process our credit card payments, both online and in customer, or in person at our utility counter. And what Paymentis is going to allow us to do is not only take payments online, but by phone, by mobile, by a cellphone, or by a mobile device, like an iPad, the customers are going to have that ability. So we're just basically expanding all the options that the customers can utilize in order to pay their utility payment, and we're consolidating this under one company. And in the, the nice thing about it is, is we are going to also save costs in the end. And so what we're doing is we're recommending that we move over to a contract with Paymentis, and it is included in the budget, this is already, all the departments that receive payments, utility payments by credit card would be your water, your power, garbage sewer, et cetera, and the costs are already included in the budget, already included in those rates, and so this is just basically supplementing the provider, switching over to a different provider. But we do expect some savings in the overall process, and then, like I said, the overall benefit is to give the customers many more options to pay their utility bill and not have to come to our drive-up window, they can always do that, or they can always come in person, or pay at the bank, or pay at our Dropbox. Do auto bill pay, there's so many ways that they can make payment, but we're trying to give them even more options and stuff. And so I do want to take the time to recognize Aaron Olson, our city treasurer, he has put in a lot of hours and work into this project, and Tiffany also started the ball rolling when she was a city treasurer, so I just wanted to say thank you to them and give them the credit that's due, but, so we're asking for your approval tonight for this project, this contract.
So, questions?
So when can, when does it start?
Well, we have about a 90 to 120-day implementation, and our goal is by the end of the year, we'll be phasing out the other credit card company and bringing this one onboard, so hopefully by the end of the year.
Awesome.
That's amazing.
So the amount, the amount you have here is just an estimate, because the rates are already built into the credit card processing fees?
Right, the rates are already built in, and so, and the nice thing about it is it is utilities only, and it's across the board, there's, there's out in the industry what's called a utility rate, and so all companies really, merchant credit card providers, have to stick to that rate, regardless in one way or another, and.
Regulated.
Right.
You mentioned that we're already paying out something.
Correct.
How is this offset by that? Costs that we're not going to be with somebody else, but Paymentis comes in, so there's some savings on one hand, even though you said eventually pays for itself, but.
Right, the savings, what we expect right now, there's, the budget's about $522,000, is built into the budget across all of those departments. And we expect maybe a $50,000 to $80,000 savings across the board, so.
All right.
Awesome, so we're not, we don't need to approve an amount here, we're just approving the contract.
Right.
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the contract for utility, credit card payment processing with Paymentis.
Sounds like praying mantis. I'd like to second that, or did you already, Joe?
That's okay.
She got more votes than you, Joe.
Yeah, she did.
Okay, well, that's, that's good, now, my only question on the motion is, were you finished with the presentation?
Yes.
Okay, because last time it was like fanfare and fireworks and.
Well, we can, we can demo it if you would like, we're more than happy to demo it for you, we just didn't know how much time you wanted.
That's okay, we've already talked about.
Just because, just because he's the pro tem mayor today, he doesn't get all these privileges.
You could always tell her there's an opt-out period.
Yeah, yeah, opt-out period.
Yeah, can you?
Well, the best part about it is, we appreciate you working towards making it easier for the customer, it's across the board the way many utilities are going, so. We have a motion and a second, any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, since you are pro-tem, we'll let you make one mistake tonight. We need to go back to the ordinance vote on the abandonment, since we need to do that by roll call.
Okay. Was that Sean? Sean caught that?
Yes, he caught, I would let you go, he caught.
Christina caught that?
Christina.
We did have an ordinance that we talked about on Canyon View Drive, so we'll reduce that to a roll-call vote, starting with Betty.
Aye.
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 Stayed, voted, stayed the same, that's good, yep, all right. I think that that's all the agenda items that I have, so I do have a request for a very short closed session to discuss one property issue. Okay. You guys don't talk too much.
Two minutes listed, Gary, can we take care of the minutes prior to that? Okay, we.
I'd like to move that we approve the minutes from May 28, 2015.
Second.
Motion and a second, on those minutes, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And I'd like to move that we approve the minutes from July 19, 2015.
July 9?
9.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I need a request to go to a closed session.
Motion to adjourn to closed session to discuss property.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is that a roll call? Okay, thank you for coming, and we'll reopen the door when we're done.
Great.